Sorry. Would everyone bow for prayer, please?
Dear holy Father Lord, we just come to you and we thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the rain. We need it. Thank you for it. Pray for all of us here. Pray that you would just protect us, keep us safe. Be with our town, watch over it and guide it. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I will open this public hearing on the grant for the fire station. I will read the guidelines for this public hearing comments. The Town Council of Centerville, Indiana will engage and receive public comments at a public hearing on June 13th, 2023 regarding a proposed fire station number one renovation grant. Persons attending the hearing may address the council on the proposed renovation grant for the fire station number one or any other matter during the public comment portion of the hearing. The Town Council will accept public comments by those attending the hearing for a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker will have an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. Those giving public comments shall limit remarks to three minutes. However, the maximum time for comments may be extended within reason so everyone who wants to speak will have an equal opportunity. Those giving public comments should sign in and approach the microphone once the chair recognizes the speaker. Persons giving public comment should please state the person's name, address before giving a comment. Please be aware that the Town Council is not required to respond to public comments during this hearing and will not be answering questions during the comment period. With that, I will open up. Would anyone like to give a public comment?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll start if you don't mind. Everybody in this room has heard a lot of information up to this project.
Yes.
My name is Jack Boniker. I live at 504 Poplar Street here in Centerville, Indiana. Along with that information, I have proudly been involved with this project and many others. And anything that serves the public such as the fire department does and is safety for all of us and life has no price. This addition will surely help our department, surely help our town. We have discussed the reasons and the ways it'll do. I just had to say I'm really proud to be part of this system. And I just ask not only for everybody in this room but in this community to support this project and I just pray to God that we get it this round. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Dennis, this is your baby.
You're starting vacation today. Come on.
Dennis Spears, 310 West Sycamore. Fire chief. This project, we were looking at the station the other night, me and three or four other guys, and the proposal for the training room will double the size of the training room we have now, which will allow us to do even more training or easily get more people in. We do a lot of state classes and now the state's requiring that we open it up to everyone in the area instead of just do departmental trainings. So that will make life a whole lot easier to have room for everybody to get into the meeting and get the trainings and that kind of stuff. The addition of the extra bay, that with the renovations will allow us to get at least one and maybe two more trucks in depending on what type truck we're looking at. So if we're looking at the aerial truck, obviously it's big enough that it's going to take up two bays. So but and so like I said, the building's not had any major renovations since 1980. We have repaired the roof because it was leaking so bad that we didn't do anything else. So we got that done here about four or five years ago. But we still, we got the heat in this year. And again, we just, we need to expand the area to have training and meetings and that kind of stuff. We open it up to a lot of other agencies. Reed Hospital does their monthly trainings for their EMS at our station. So that's about what I got.
Anyone else? I would like to say, I'm Dan Wondersen. I live at 407 West School Street, the president of Town Council. And we had during the COVID and stuff, we had to actually open up the fire station and hold our council meetings in there because obviously you can see in this room that we did not have enough room in order to accommodate and be six feet apart. So that was one thing. The, what we had to do was actually wind up, moving the trucks out of the bay and then
Take his toy.
Setting them outside. It fell apart. But with that, that left them sitting outside and we had to do that. And then if we have any, you know, bad disasters or whatever where we have to take people there, there was no, really no room in there to put them in those bays and so forth with people that, you know, may be on oxygen or so forth if we have a power outage. So we really need this larger, you know, training room. Also because our trucks pretty much are diesel, we do not have the air system in there to collect the exhaust. And so when they fire those up, they have to open up all the doors and stuff before they do that and it still leaves a little lingering of the fumes. And so with this, you know, we get this, we get this air filtration system in there too. Also, we do now have a lot of lady firefighters that own ours and we don't really have a adequate facility for them to change their clothes whenever they come back from a fire run, take a shower and so forth. And they've had to kind of switch off with the men. And so getting that for them would be also a big plus for our fire station. Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to say also that it, I hope we never have to use it as a fallout shelter, but that would be a great asset to those who need it if something does happen or if they don't. What a great place that we could have. Everybody could use as their place to go for refuge. I sure hope we get it. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
I'll speak. Josh Tudor, 511, on our court here in Centerville. I've said it most of these meetings, but for everybody that's listening, understand that this building will cost us money. Our job is to hopefully benefit the community and spend your money wisely. The repairs and the upgrades that are not just needed but required are going to cost money. And without this, we could be spending close to that money just to come into compliance rather than benefiting. So we hope to spend your money wisely and spend our money wisely as a community. And I think this is one of the best ways to do it is to apply for these grants and hopefully take care of the needs and the wants.
Anybody else? Anyone want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to say so the head administrator for the project, when we met with OPR the other day, one of the main things that they said we didn't get the grant the first time was because we lacked residential support, residential letters. Just they want to hear, I mean, we had a real good application on the fire department side. I mean, the need's there. We documented that. I mean, they understand the need is there. But with these, with these grant funds, they look to how we, how this is going to help all the residents in the community. So if you know anyone that would be willing to write a letter, I know you know the fire department's important to your community and we saw that with the fire enrichment how important the fire department is. If anybody out there knows, if anyone who would be willing to write a letter, if they consider to Dan or give it to the park treasurer's office, we'd really appreciate it because that's the main thing right now that we really need more than anything. So if some of the lady fire department members would write something too as to their concerns or problems they're having, I think that they'd like to hear from them as well. So thank you.
If we need those relatively quick because this application has to go in. So if you would do that for us, we would really appreciate it if we could get them sometime this week for sure.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm Jack Boniker again. I heard originally when I went out the first time and I know there's a lot of scuttlebug and that's all it is, is a scuttlebug. This project is funding money that we already have that's available through grants and what we're matching to it. This is not going to cost you any more in your monthly bills. This is not, this is not going to hit a taxpayer. And the scuttlebug originally was, is how can, how can we afford this and it's going to cost me more and it's going to be more in my bills? That's, that's nothing but false information. This is not going to cost you any more in your monthly bills. This is going to actually somewhere down the road, again, just like I opened up with, be life-saving. This is going to support life-saving systems in this town. Don't hesitate to support it. We need everything we can get. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, then I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing on the fire station grant. Do I have a second?
You have a second?
I have a second by Josh. We call the rule, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Boniker?
Aye.
Gary Halbert?
Aye.
Dan Wondersen?
Aye.
Motion carried and it is 7:14. With that, I will open the Centerville Town Council meeting for June 13th, 2023. We call the rule, please.
David Kate? Josh Tudor?
Here.
Jack Boniker?
Here.
Gary Halbert?
Here.
Dan Wondersen?
Here.
Next item we have is the minutes for May 9th. And that was council meeting on May the 9th. Has everyone gone over those minutes? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from May 9th, 2023.
Seven.
I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jack. We call the rule, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Gary Halbert?
Aye.
Dan Wondersen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item is the court session on May 30th, 2023, the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from May 30th, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. We call the rule, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Boniker?
Aye.
Gary Halbert?
Aye.
Dan Wondersen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item we have is the approval of the claims. Has anyone got any questions, comments on the claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the claims.
Motion's been made.
I got a motion by Jack. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second by David. We call the rule, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Boniker?
Aye.
Gary Halbert?
Aye.
Dan Wondersen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item we have is the approval of the billing adjustment. That is for $490.51. I would entertain a motion to accept the billing adjustment.
So move.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Josh. We call the rule, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Boniker?
Aye.
Gary Halbert?
Aye.
Dan Wondersen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item we have is the allowance report. I would entertain a motion to accept the allowance report.
So move.
I have Josh.
Josh. Second by Gary.
Second by Gary. We call the rule.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Boniker?
Aye.
Gary Halbert?
Aye.
Dan Wondersen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item we have, Main Street. Railroad. Anyone given status on the Wayne County Emergency Management?
Well, as you know, the clock's ticking on our after-hours utility calls. Each of you should have a copy of a comment proposal. I was trying to gather some information from the EMA director and how many calls they receive. And the answer I was given was that our not-Admirable police calls go through the sheriff's department's number and there's no way that they could track what call was actually coming from here. So trying to figure out a plan to go with is going to be kind of hit and miss for a few months if we decide to go with this. Review it and do you want to move forward with it or let it play because I believe July 1st is our end date of this.
And do we know about the setup on this as far as if they, you know, we approve this, is that just something they will collect the phone number from?
They will collect the phone numbers we give them for each department in all orders.
So be kind of right away?
Once all the paperwork is done and everything is set up, there will be a little time in getting everything set up and up and around. Our biggest problem is going to be trying to figure out how many minutes we actually need a month. And we can adjust that from month to month to be a settled date. They're giving us an option. Somebody goes on vacation, we can call them, tell them off from this date to this date, use this number and then they're right to do it.
So we're looking at minimum $60 a month?
A minimum, yes.
And could be upwards into $400, $500 on a bad month?
I'm guessing around $300 on a bad month.
And that's month by month, right? Depending on how, what we get and where we're at?
Well, you're paying the monthly fee, whatever plan that you choose to go with.
Oh, okay.
And then if you go over, it's so much a minute and a half.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, see, if you go with, you'll pay that no matter what.
I really don't see where we have much choice here.
What, we don't at this point? That's, it's just.
All the communities I've talked to, all that want are using this company. They find to be very reliable, very respectful with followers.
I would, you know, really suggest right now that if we went with the 100 minutes and see how that takes us in the first month, if we can change that, that.
Even, even at that, it, it, this month, another 200 minutes or a dollar six to make the 300. So I don't see that people are going to be calling, talking that long about that many call-ins. But I mean, the 110, I think, like you said, is probably the best.
And what we can do, you know, if we, we can gauge that and then go from there because since we can change it. Because we do need to have this in place by July 1st.
What about any of the other options? Do other people use these other options that you know about?
The different communities are using different options.
But that's above and beyond what we already have anyways right now. Because the one thing we got right now is call and dispatch, right?
Yeah. I would like to go with the web access for the call scheduling, which is under $5.
That's a month? And keep in mind, this is for after hours and weekends, holidays.
Just by my quick math, I don't think you lose either way you look at this until you get up in the higher amounts without doing some math, but a dollar seven a minute is what it would charge your extra. You're being charged $5 more than 50 minutes at that rate. $5 more for one ten. So if you do the 50 and go over 50, it's still less money than doing the 100. Just saying, with the way that math works out. So I think any of them we start with would be fine.
Yeah. And you know what I'm looking at? Calls are down in the summer months unless we have a major storm. Over the winter months, they are a little more than 30. But by dispatch not being able to give me the number of calls at the times, we're just going to shoot them in the dark.
Guess what I'm saying is I think when you really look at it, whether you, whether you do 50 or 300, you're going to be in the ballpark of the same money spent if you do 300 versus the 50. You'll save a little bit at 300, but finding that happy medium in the middle, I don't think you're, it's not like you're going to lose 100 bucks a month by, by testing it.
I'd be surprised if we did 50 calls a month.
Well, it's just 50 minutes on the phone. I guess the question would be how long is your average call to their service?
A minute? Does it call in on a voicemail? Usually a minute or less.
Less than wrong winded, like somebody we all know.
Are their, are their calls answered by a person 24/7?
Yes, their calls are answered by a person 24/7.
So reasonable to say if they're leaving you a voicemail in a minute, it may be two or three. Like I said, we've got, we've got to do it. I would suggest that we, I think everybody else is agreed, so we go to 50 or 100 and see where we're at. I would start with the 50 and pay the, pay the dollar seven.
Make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
What about the web access?
If it's beneficial to, to the employees, then yes. Is that the only way you're looking for it? Yes. So my official motion will be to go ahead and move forward with the 50 agent net monthly as well as the web access for the additional $5 a month.
Okay, you got a motion by Jack. Josh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now I got it, Jack. We call the rule, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Gary Bon, Jack Boniker?
Aye.
Gary Halbert? Dan Wondersen?
Aye.
No way this is true.
Motion carried.
I will get in contact and get some more.
Can we have you sign the contract before June 1st?
You want to amend your motion?
Just do another one.
Kevin to sign.
Yeah. What's, what's easiest?
Just do another motion.
All right. I'll make a motion that we allow Kevin to sign the contract.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second right there. We call the rule, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Boniker?
Aye.
Gary Halbert?
Aye.
Dan Wondersen?
Aye.
COVID, of course. Do you want administration fees for repeat offenders?
Yeah, we talked about it last month and didn't take any action on it. You wanted to think about it, so.
We're waiting on you. The paper deals and stuff is legal. So we'll move that onto the work sessions. Centerville Methodist Church?
Do I have to go up there?
No.
I am from Centerville United Methodist Church and I would like to ask to be able to close Morton Avenue on August 27th from 9 until 11 for our church's bicentennial celebration. We're having a circuit rider ride up to the church and preach from the steps in front of the church, like it would have been done.
The whole block of South Morton?
Yes. Half a block?
From 9:00 in the morning to 11:00 in the morning?
Yes.
What's the date on that again? 27.
August 27th.
Dennis, of course you got, you're, you're already detouring.
It probably won't be that long, but.
You're probably talking half a day.
At the moment.
You said from 9 to 11.
Nine to 11 is two hours.
That's two hours. It probably will only be an hour, hour and 15 minutes, but we just want to cover it just in case.
Most we have at that time of day is, seems like campers and boaters and things like that don't have any more semi traffic Sunday mornings.
Did you agree on that, Dennis?
Yeah. Like I said, it's Sunday mornings.
Good thing it's south, south of 40 because of the 40 and 70 stuff.
Like all the people trying to get to church. You can just stop them and make them send their.
They can watch our church.
Yeah.
With a recommendation, with a recommendation, I'll make a motion that we accept those terms the 27th from 9 to 11.
Okay, you got a motion by Jack. Do I have a second?
A second, that.
I have a second by David. We call the rule, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Boniker?
Aye.
Gary Halbert?
Aye.
Dan Wondersen?
Aye.
Motion carried. If you would, you know, get with Ed and Dennis, Kate, they need any coordination on that. Of course, Kevin, you need to bring up the barricades.
They'll already be out for our way everywhere.
You're all invited.
Okay. Good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item that we have, you should have in your packets, the. Okay, next item that we have, you should have in your packets, uh, the quotes for the appraisal, um, property that we've been looking at. We received one, two, three of them. One, one was a no bid, so we have three that bid. And we need to go ahead and move forward. One of the bids was for, uh, a thousand dollars, that was five hundred for each property. One was for four, two thousand, six hundred and fifty. And the other one was for two thousand.
Same detail?
Yes, uh, we have to have, we have to have two, two separate appraisals, uh, for government entities, so.
So we need to accept two of those then, is what you're saying?
We have to accept two of them, so. And the two lowest ones are a thousand and two thousand, so. I would entertain a motion on accepting the two lowest.
I'd make that motion.
I got a motion by Gary to accept those two lowest appraisals bids. I'll second that. Now I have a second by David. We call the rule on that, please. David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonner?
Aye.
Gary Holber?
Aye.
Dan Wonderson?
Aye.
And I will ask that, uh, that you put resolution, those on resolution twenty, twenty-three, oh, four, uh, confirming so that we can, we'll, we'll sign that, as you put those on there. Yep, we can go ahead and get those appraisals. Okay, next item we have is the PFAS retainer agreement. Go ahead, Kevin. You know more about that, Dave.
Well, we discussed this back in December, I believe, and it was sent to legal for review. Legal is review that feels we need to move forward with this. To refresh your memories, it's synthetic chemicals that have been reaching into the water supplies. And if there is any kind of suit or settlement, this will make us eligible to receive it. We are sub-entitled. And our last test, we are still playing at this time. And if there would be an unfunded mandate that comes down that says we have to set up and be ready to treat, and this might invite lots of funds to help us pull this out.
And I might add, I had a conversation with Ed Martin, the town attorney, and he highly suggests that we go ahead and enter into this, and along with that, to allow me to sign. So I would entertain a motion on that.
And this is at no cost if we don't ever have to enter this.
No cost if we do not use it.
And if we do use it, their funds are...
If we use it for a settlement, then there will be a fee.
But that fee is taken directly out of
Out of the settlement.
The disbursement to, to you. I'll make that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Jack. We call the rule, please. David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonner?
Aye.
Gary Holber?
Aye.
Dan Wonderson?
Aye.
Motion carried. This is on the, uh, fire hot screen. Right here. And this is what I gave you. Yeah, next is the, uh, four factor analysis for the fire department. That will go along with the grant, which we have done before, and I need a motion to allow me to sign that.
So.
Okay, I've got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second? A second. I have a second by David. We call the rule, please. David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonner?
Aye.
Gary Holber?
Aye.
Dan Wonderson?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item we have is police departments.
I don't have any left.
Do you got anything else, Agent?
Um, brackets for the lights for CYL, I've been notified, will hopefully be shipped from the manufacturer by the end of the week. And the twelve portable power units, we gave permission to purchase at the last work session. They have been purchased and it'll be a grand total of six thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars for twelve. I know I couldn't give you an exact price until we got to find what they're in. We actually have them, they'll be on the ground here probably tomorrow.
What's an average lifespan? Expected, I should say.
Expected ten to twenty years. It, which, it could be less than that depending upon how they're taken care of.
Usage?
We're just gonna set them out for short term.
Any, any warnings on those?
They'll be expired by the time our...
Yeah, usually electrical ones put to the shore.
Yeah. As long as they were available, I jumped on, so we wouldn't have, you know, all the issues we're having with the brackets. So I got, unless you got anything?
Building Commissioner? You got a report that says? Are you doing the art way, Dave?
So, I passed out a flyer to you guys before we started. We're looking at trying to do a night in the park on July twenty-second. Um, we're gonna be showing the Super Mario Brothers. I've talked to the girls in the office, they said that that date was available, and I just thought to come to you guys with final approval.
I would entertain a motion on approving this request for moving in, in the park on July twenty-second. Assuming, I got a motion by Josh, do I have a second?
Second with comment. Um, these are really entertaining, really nice to, to get your families together. I went up and helped make some popcorn and stuff at one last year, and it's a real worthwhile thing to do, so bring your families out. Have a good time.
And it's free?
Yeah.
Always like that. We call the rule, please. David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonner?
Aye.
Gary Holber?
Aye.
Dan Wonderson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The other item we got, we had a request, uh, from a local business wanting to use the, our bill, when we send out the bills as a part of a mass mailing. We did not set this up for that. It was set up, you know, for nonprofit, you know, stuff, and then obviously account stuff, but, uh, they made this request. We would have to change, you know, the resolution that we had years ago on that, so wanted to bring that. We need to talk to, uh, legal because, you know, if we did this for one, we'd have to do it for all of them, that.
And we never have, correct?
We never have. Only for nonprofits. So we'll put that on the work session, and then I'll get some more information on that. Street Department?
For those of you who don't know, the community crossing second round will open July third. I'd be planning on applying. From the numbers I've received this afternoon, they're gonna look at about a twenty-five to twenty-seven percent increase in the cost issue, which is gonna cut back what we do. I was trying to have the final row worked out when I presented the work session.
Is the number still like the same, like if I remember right, it was like seventy-five thousand and we, and we paid twenty-five, but now with the increase, we're gonna be picking up?
No, it's still a seventy-five, twenty-five, but, uh, materials and labor.
Means you're gonna get less done for the same amount of...
Yeah. Which I expected, man, pretty, so I wasn't really prepared for something that size. I'll get that worked through. Um, we did have a street sweeper come down and demo for us yesterday. It's, the one that they demoed is just a newer version of what we already have now, with a few added features. The one we have is one of the originals that they manufacture. So after twelve years, they've added some upgrades to, to make it a little better.
What's the name of the company that makes these?
Um, Tycon is what we got.
The T?
Yeah. I'm waiting on the, it's why you see on, on this world, but they haven't offered a demo. That's what's good enough to bring one down and jam low. I'm trying to get the other bed hooked together so I can present it to you. The one they demoed is gonna come up for sale in August. I'll get everything done in time, get the beds in, if it's lower than a demo model, I would like to do it.
Is there a ballpark on that?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Whoa. Lamborghini.
Richard, what did you think for it?
You were sitting down, it was good.
Sorry.
One of the upgrades is, this one is all stainless steel. So we're not gonna have a problem with the rust in that.
One nail, rusted out, pretty bad.
The hopper has nothing left for the little patches to do. And I believe that's all I got. Does she have anything?
Have they ever thought about putting liners in them? Is that feasible?
A company has tried a liner with the abrasive debris that comes up, it just needs to...
What is it done with, spray on, like an undercoating sometimes on vehicles?
Yeah, but all the rocks.
We're talking about the inside.
Yeah, I'm talking about the whole thing.
You're talking about that two hundred and fifty thousand. Z bars.
I got an idea. We can give you a fifty-five gallon burn on the burn.
Well, that's how they used to do it for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I was thinking maybe rent it out and go sweep Cambridge or something, I don't know.
Sorry about that.
I was just wondering.
Please try it, you think you should.
If I had to guess, if you shot line X in that, you'd probably avoid your warranty and all your everything else anyway.
Wow. Anything else on the street? Water and fire?
Don't go nowhere.
Oh, I didn't. Okay, um, you each have a copy of our annual drinking water quality report, which will be going out with the bills this month. Um, it will be posted online as well as posted, already posted online and posted here. So that'll be taken care of for the year. We did repair our main link in Plankton, Europe, on the eighteenth. We repaired service line last week, and we've been looking for it.
Pretty good size, Lee.
Well, about seven thousand a day. We're still doing some potholeing, testing and storing drains and testing sewer, so we've gotta find it sooner than I like. The cavity's well open sometime. And the deadline to apply for the Indiana Finance Authority lead service inventory was last Friday. Gentlemen, you have applied, I believe it's fifteen thousand dollars. And that'll go towards the fifty-five thousand, Lockmueller will be incurring for us in doing it.
And we've already approved that cost, correct?
Correct.
This has all been approved on the, you know, we did follow through.
We said fifteen thousand, or whatever.
And we've applied to say fifteen thousand.
I'm trying to make excuses, I'm trying.
When will we know approval on that?
Um, Indiana Finance Authority probably a month, so depending on how many applications they get, I don't know. We met all call stations, we're at some meetings we've been attending.
One nice thing is, you know, we're ahead of the curve here, because that is mandated by, you know, by the state. You don't really have a choice, so we're being proactive again and getting this taken care of now.
Over the corner, four is the deadline, we have it submitted. Once we get that submitted, then we'll start working out the plan for the repairs, you know, which is not even a big deal. I think that's all I got underwater, unless you have anything to add.
Fire Department? Dennis?
Uh, I think the only thing I got is, uh, as we noted in here, our air conditioner went out a week and a half ago. Um, the outside unit was replaced four years ago, so I called Dick Hill because they replaced it hoping it would be under warranty, and of course, it's not the outside unit, it's the inside unit, which is not under warranty. So I talked to Jack, um, we got a quote to get it fixed. Um, talked to the service guys, they said probably a couple of days on parts, so we ordered it. Uh, a nice young lady called from over there and said it will be, parts will be here in five weeks, so maybe this will be fine, time we get it to go on, but that's all right.
It's been cool.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Our biggest concern was, he said his computers were overheating.
Yeah, first night it was down, our, our server shut off because it overheated, so we removed a few ceiling tiles and keep a fan running in that office to keep it cooled down, so it's working right now, so. Uh, I think that's it.
Excuse me, what was the repair cost on it?
Uh, it was around four thousand dollars.
Forty-one hundred dollars.
Yeah, the coils are bad, uh, they are a one-year warranty item. Uh, and then there was some kind of a switch assembly in there, and both of them were right at two thousand dollars a piece. And then it was like a hundred and six dollars for labor and checking.
Service call, and say that's all.
I think that's all I got, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and, 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 uh, he had a good suggestion over here, Josh. He was talking about port wears, and I've got one that I even actually said, hey, we can put in that computer, but I'd be more than welcome to let him use it. Problem is, is I don't have an exhaust for that, it's one of the ones that exhausts out the wall or somewhere in the ceiling, so we might still look into that if it, if it's some kind of problem, I could move that over there.
Well, they, they make them, the exhaust tube or the draw tube just goes out of window.
That's where, that's what I've got, but we have no access. That's where, that's what I've got, but we have no access for that, yeah.
Windows don't open.
So, and you know, we might still look into that, and we bought that big cooling unit.
Yeah, we do have that.
So if we need to, we can maybe like put that by the doors or by the bay or something?
Yeah, we'll probably try it tomorrow, um, let's see, yeah, tomorrow, because Reed has their monthly meeting tomorrow night, so we'll probably have them.
You won't be there, though, right?
Set it up, no, well, there's eight of us at our leaving to go to Muncie tomorrow for the convention for the rest of the week. We are hosting it, so that's why the larger number than normal are going to go, so then we'll be back Saturday morning.
And if need be, have you talked to others local where if we need?
Yeah, we already, already, they all know that we're going to be a little shorthanded, so they're all ready to cover for us.
Anything else?
Not missing by the council, any questions?
Waste water, swimming water?
So I think I got going good.
Good. Good, Gary?
Good.
You all should have a copy of the EMA halftime report to review and look over. There's still working on the 14th changeover, they were in last week, and done some aerial surveying, to find out, get us a closer number on what we need to get that completed. I'm glad to say the only power outages we have are scheduled maintenance outages. Last storm at mid-flicker, but that was just a relay on weeks in, no more than 10 seconds, so I forgot to put them back on, so I don't consider that an issue. Your report will show how many poles EMA's replaced, and we're replacing street lights as we can. We did get another partial shipment in, so just wait to get the pole shipment in, and we'll be back at that point. That's probably all I have, unless you have anything?
Uh, what's the, I know we were waiting on those transformers, but when we did this a while ago, we were looking at a pretty long backward supply chain issue. Have they given us an approximate time for that, or is that just a, we'll get them to you when you get them type of thing?
Basically, it's, we'll get them when we get them. The school transformer is on the ground, the dampers, when they're ready, we'll set that in, but with the backlog and the DMS with the up to 10, it's still on the radar. We've had a discussion about maybe leaving one sitting on the ground in case of an emergency within the EMA group, so we're going to go that route, and once it frees up a little more, then we will go back and get cost, which right now, I hope we've got a lot of cost on those transformers up there. It will happen. And maybe one other thing we ought to look at, Baker Tilly was in here to make her presentation. You know, I feel we seriously need to look at using those credits to possibly help the phase one, and then maybe roll one directly into phase two and three.
By using that, if we are able to get that in, you know, because we've got four phases total, so you're, us, we're looking at that we would have two of those, because it's 50/50, you know, paid for out of that, and then we actually would be out, I mean, instead of four, as a total package. But I, I would need a motion on that Inflation Reduction Act.
So moved.
Got a motion by Gary, you go ahead with that with Baker Tilly, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Josh. We call the roll, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonderson? Aye.
I got a question.
Motion carried, yeah.
The three transformers down at Warm Glow, are they in use, all three of them?
Yeah, from water, okay. Down there at the factory, yes.
Okay.
We changed the bearing out on it, so it was on the outside, maybe at the same time.
Does anybody go in the cage up here at Warm Glow?
At Warm Glow?
Yeah.
I think that's the only one.
I worry about those.
It's a little too hot for us.
I worry.
It's kind of like your station out here.
I worry about those with all the kids trafficking back and forth through there.
To date, no, we've had nobody get it.
Good.
One of the reasons we want it to be bad.
Okay.
You, in your package, do you have for the Ames Conference, which will be August 22nd through the 24th at French Lick, and I really, if you can go, I highly suggest, because the education that you will get out of that is well worth it, and I know that Kevin, Richard, and myself are planning on, would like to go, and if any of you would like to go, we have to have stuff in by the 20th of this month.
Friday would be great.
So.
It's Friday would be great.
Yeah.
Because we have to be open until 10 o'clock to get the.
Do they still have rooms available?
Well, you won't know till the 20th, that's when they'll, they'll.
That's when they open, uh, presumably.
So we stay in the, the night of the 22nd, 23rd?
Actually, you want to make sure you're there for the early bird sessions.
Because they're very good, they have, they have, these are all training classes, as Mike said, they're very good, very informative.
But three days, two nights?
Yep, roughly, or three, you know, depends on how you want to go. What I need is a motion to allow anyone, anyone on the council, Richard and Kevin, to attend this conference.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Jack, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Gary, we call the roll, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonderson?
Aye.
Motion carried. If you do want to go, and I like I said, I highly suggest if you can, even if you can make it one day, they have, it's, it's worth it, but make sure you get with Richard before the 20th and let him know, because they, they book up quick. I think the largest one I've seen was last year when I went, so off of that. You got anything else? Let me make these announcements. The CYL parade and fireworks will be on June the 17th, which is this Saturday, but the parade is going to be at 8:30 a.m., and then fireworks would be at dusk. Then also, the executive session that is scheduled for tomorrow, June the 14th, that will be at 5:30 to discuss personnel. Then also, a council, our council meeting work session will be June the 28th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. here in the council room. There is a planning commission meeting, June 22nd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. here in the council room. With that, I would entertain a motion to close the Central Town Council meeting for June 13th. So moved. Got a motion by Josh, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Dave. We call the roll, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonderson?
Aye.
Bye-byes. Motion carried. And David, you need to call.